Okay, are we ready to move forward everybody? Okay, Trusty Petchukov.
Action items. Okay, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
So, we have eighteen with the additions that were at our table tonight, but I think we have a quick slide on number, or we have some kind of visual for number five. Am I correct?
Yeah, Mr. Wallen.
Oh, Mr. Wallen.
And Mr. Brzezinski, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we can do that right now.
This is the.
Do you want to do that now? This is the Lorrie parking. I'm not anticipating anyone being in objection to it. If they are, good luck because the city has mandated it, but just to let people know what's going on over at Lorrie School. Do we have that? If you don't have it, we can wait and move ahead.
I could speak about it, but Tim does it much more eloquently than I will, so I'll defer to Tim.
Oh, great, okay. Eloquence is good.
The city's utility and street upgrade project reached the Lorrie neighborhood, and the city has decided to follow guidelines for the American Association of Safety and Transportation officials, which call for the perpendicular parking that was designed for the school back in 1952 to be converted to parallel parking. They did work with us, and we retained a civil engineer, and we were able to come up with a safe alternative that was able to preserve the majority of the parking lots for the school. And that involved creating angle parking instead of the perpendicular parking. And the city was agreeable to that, and they did request that we pay the extra cost passed on, they were going to pass the extra cost on to us that the construction involved.
Yeah, so that's item number five on our agenda tonight, the extra cost, which is roughly about $100,000, more or less. I know if we had lost forty parking spaces around Lorrie School, it would have been trouble because it's so tight in there as it is, but I mean, it's a great way to encourage people to bike to work, I guess. What else do you say? It's too tight, so I'm glad you were able to retrieve those parking spaces, and we lost only four. So, is everybody following with that? That was presented tonight to the Building and Site Committee.
And it's also on the agenda for the City Relations Committee meeting tomorrow, so we'll have another discussion about it.
Now, was this the only school that's being impacted by any of the work over there?
Well, I don't know the extent of the city's complete project, you know, street and utility upgrade. It may in effect roll past another school at one point.
But we don't have that kind of situation at any of the other schools.
Correct, that's a unique parking situation.
Yeah, that one's a little bit different.
There's no real lot.
Right. It's on the residential street.
Quick question, the parallel parking that's there now, is that the parallel parking that's right in front of the school?
No, we're talking about the perpendicular parking that faces into the athletic field, on both sides, lengths of the athletic field.
That's across from the residences.
So, that's perpendicular now, so we want to angle it.
Well, they were going to, the best practices call for the elimination of perpendicular parking and the installation of parallel parking. That particular reconfiguration would have cost the schools over forty parking spots, so it would have been extremely difficult for the public to visit the school during, you know, plays or just normal events and be able to populate the school and not impact the neighborhood.
Good. Okay, thank you very much for retrieving the spaces. Sue, all right, so with that being said, I think we're ready to go ahead.
Okay. So, we have. Move that action items numbered one through eighteen be approved as recommended in this agenda?
Before we say anything, did anyone want anything else pulled? I don't see anything else that was in there that requires a roll call.
Are we doing a roll call for that? What are you saying?
No, no.
No.
I just wanted to show people what it was. So, did anyone want a roll call on it? We don't require a roll call? Okay, so, one through, please read it again.
One through eighteen. Move that action items numbered one through eighteen be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support? Okay, is there any dissent on this, or is this a unanimous affirmative? It is, okay, thank you. So, Trusty Petchukov normally would read the summary, however.
You want to introduce?
Yes.
Yes, Dr. Maleko has some of the.
So, I'd like to ask all five, we have five AP candidates that were just approved, so I'd ask all of them to come up.
And who sat here patiently?
Patiently, yes, and I want to just mention, so they can all come up, and we'll just have each of them come, and I'll introduce them. I want to tell you that we have a very rigorous interview process, and I got to tell you that all of these candidates are actually coming out of the intern program. Ms. Ali Bazey is overseeing that program, and it's been a real positive as we're looking to grow our administrative talent. And we really do see some really good candidates coming out, and the other positive is that the committees that the parents and the staff are involved, a lot of that is matching. We don't always get an agreement, and this year was one of the years where we really saw very good committees that came in with a lot of data showing, you know, a very consistent determination. And so, some of the people that maybe didn't make it this time around are also candidates for the interns. It's been a real positive, and I know some of the trustees in the past have talked about growing our own, and so I think that's a real positive. I appreciate the support of the board. So, we're going to start, we could probably hold the applause till the end for all of them, and then we'll recognize them all, but I'll first have Sam Declova for McCullough Unis.
Hello, my name is Samir Declova. It's been my lifelong goal to be an administrator, and thank you to Dr. Maleko for giving me this opportunity, and the board for giving me this opportunity, and I look forward to serving the students, parents, and staff of the Dearborn Public Schools. I've been with the Dearborn Public Schools for over twenty years now, and like I said earlier, I will continue to do the best job that I can possibly do, and I'm just so excited to be standing here in front of you today. Thank you.
All right.
Beautiful.
So, we have.
I feel like I should clap.
Go ahead, go ahead. All right, and we have Hiba Abdalbaki at Fortson Assistant Principal.
Hi, I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to be able to serve the Dearborn School students. I'm really excited to get started to work at Fortson with the staff and the administrative team led by Principal Hayam Alcadre. I'm especially excited to be at Fortson since I am a Fortson High School graduate, so it's an honor to be a tractor once again, and I'm really looking forward to a successful school year. Thank you.
All right.
So, we have Amal Abdullah at Miller Elementary Assistant Principal.
Hi, good evening. I would like to start off by saying thank you to President Lane, Superintendent Maleko, and the rest of the board. I'm very, very honored and privileged to be here tonight. I'm humbled by this opportunity and very thankful for it. I'm excited at the prospect, and I'm excited to be with the Miller community. That's where I did my internship this past year. My journey to this moment would not be possible without the foundation that I was given, and that began here in Dearborn. So, I am proud to say that I'm a product of this district, and I want the students of this district, including my own two girls who are here, to get the best educational experience, as did I, and hopefully, you know, wanting them to be successful and productive citizens someday. There's nothing more rewarding than giving back and making a difference in the lives of students, and that's what I intend to do, so thank you.
Can you have your daughters stand up? Are they back there? Can they stand up, the family?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know one is looking kind of embarrassed.
All right, and we have Pete Cochianas for Etzel Ford Assistant Principal.
Hi, I'm Pete Cochianas, Etzel Ford High School. I want to thank Dr. Maleko, the board, the executive directors, Principal Casbolt, Principal Alcadre. I interned both at Fortson and at Etzel Ford for this opportunity. Very humbled, grateful, approaching twenty years in the district and transitioning from the classroom at Etzel Ford into the administrative team is a wonderful opportunity to continue to serve the families in this community, in particular, at Etzel Ford High School. So, thank you all very much.
And we have Marwan Salami, who's Dearborn High Assistant Principal.
Hi, good evening. So, I wrote just a little bit, only because, not because I have a lot to say, but when Dr. Maleko called me, he, you know, said he was going to make his recommendation, and then he said you got to keep it short between thirty to sixty seconds, and I looked at my wife, and I said, "That's going to be the biggest challenge because it takes me that long just to say hello to people," so we'll get through this very quickly. Like many of my colleagues that were up here today, I am a student of Dearborn Public Schools' K-12, so it is an honor to be back and serve the district, be here as a teacher, as an educator, and step into an administrative position. I would like to congratulate my colleagues that were here with me as well, and I wish them the best on their next chapter in their educational careers. I would like to thank the Dearborn Public School Board for the dedication that they show continuously to our students and our community. A sincere thank you to Dr. Maleko and the entire executive cabinet and past administrators of mine, which really provided me the tools needed to step into this role. I look forward to serving the pioneer community while educating, inspiring, and celebrating all of our students. Lastly, I want to thank my wife, you know, for her love and unwavering support because clearly I don't feel I would be in this position without her. So, I have so much to thank and so much love to give back to her for that, so thank you very much.
Being the daughter of a high school principal, I know that that takes a lot away from families, and they do make the sacrifice. It's a lot of time and a lot of heart, so I'm really proud that the new crop of administrators is going to be as good as so many awesome, amazing administrators. I could get teary right now to think of all the great people who have gone through this district, some who are here, some who have passed on, but you're carrying forward a great tradition, and we're really excited to have you, so thank you for stepping up for our students and our city. Trusty Hamud.
I also want to congratulate all of you in just the passion, the enthusiasm. Our students are very lucky to have you, and this is such a sweet day for me because I actually graduated with Marwan. We went to Fortson together, graduated together, so for me to approve this was very personal to me, and I know you'll always be a tractor at heart, but we're all one district. So, congratulations to all of you. Very proud.
All right, so, great.
Can I also just really compliment to Mason Ali Bazey, the executives in the Human Resource Department? They got the recruitment out early. There was a lot of candidates. We had the principals that got approved in the two meetings in June, and so it is a lot of work, and they were really on top of it, and again, getting out there and recruiting and getting people ready, and so I want to commend the entire team. We do work as a team. My philosophy is always a team, just as board superintendent, and that team really, you know, we wouldn't be as successful without the team, so I just wanted to mention the entire team. I appreciate all of them being involved, and again, congratulations to all the candidates. Very excited to have you in the new positions.
And it's great to have them ready for the start of the school year.
And thank you to the board for allowing us to move this meeting to this time because, as you're aware, if we would have had it early in July, we wouldn't have had them ready, and now we do, so I appreciate, you know, the support of the board in that area as well. Thank you.
It's great to see the list of all the new teachers we'll have, too. There's nothing nicer than that. Okay, are we ready for summary? Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval to purchase two hundred LLI kits over the next two years. Number three, approval to award a contract to GLES for painting per sealed bid thirteen twenty-four. Number four, approval to award a contract to A-Land Construction for cement work per sealed bid number thirteen twenty-three. Five, approval to award a purchase order to the City of Dearborn in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. Board report seventeen oh three. Six through eight, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Nine, approval of 2017 high school graduates, congratulations. Ten, approval of donations. Eleven, approval of emergency blanket order purchases. Twelve, approval of staff hiring to pilot a community in schools program in the Etzel Ford feeder track. Thirteen, approval of contract change with JCI to ensure equipment performance for energy savings. Fourteen, approval of the appointment of assistant principal at Miller Elementary School. Fifteen, approval of the appointment of assistant principal at McCullough Unis School. Sixteen, approval of the appointment of assistant principal at Dearborn High School. Seventeen, approval of the appointment of assistant principal at Etzel Ford High School. And eighteen, approval of the appointment of assistant principal at Fortson High School.
Good job.
Okay, next. That's why I got this job. We ready for discussion items?
Yep, ready.
So, I'll ask Ms. Ali Bazey and Mr. Wall to come up.
Boundary line changes, school of choice, and boundary line exemption, Dearborn High School addition.
Can I mention, too, that the core, like, we obviously have different people involved in different meetings, but kind of the core group with Mr. Mashur, who's not in the district right now, is also part of the planning for this, so he's, it'd be the four of us in the core group, and then it branches out depending on which school is involved as we move forward with this process, just so that the board is aware and the public.
Yeah, this meeting, or this discussion is talking about just keeping the board updated on our capacity and construction issues. So, just looking back, what we talked back in May was that we are working this summer to add additional classrooms that are existing classrooms, repurposing of them, so that's going to help with some of the capacity issues, and that was, of course, at the Michael Berry Center, Fortson High School, Dearborn High School, and Lorrie. Back on the twenty-sixth meeting, we started to talk about, the board gave us direction to look at Dearborn High School and looking at an expansion of classrooms at that site. The district team met with the architect, operations administration, to kind of go over the options. The options, we created four options, A, B, C, and D, and at the Building and Site Committee today, we spent fifty minutes of the sixty minutes on just that issue. So, it's a very dynamic issue. We, several proposals, again, but we're really relating it back to the board of how the board wants to move forward with the capacity issue, so it's a dynamic issue that the board really has to help us with the direction on this. So, there's options A, B, and C, and D, we'll talk about briefly. Obviously, this is dealing with the potential growth, so we're going to have some presentation, I believe, next meeting possibly, on one of the consultants coming in talking about our potential growth, and then I want the board to make the decision on what they want to do with possible redistricting, that actually given us the direction, move forward on what options A, B, or C, D. Obviously, it's very time sensitive because of when we actually want to have the classrooms ready. This is not a quick process, so that's going to be a very important issue to make sure we keep in mind. So, option A is dealing with a fourteen classroom addition, dealing with some classrooms on the main floor up by G Hall, and addition of classrooms in the courtyard. Option B is dealing with, or I'm sorry, option A is actually dealing with the top of G Hall, too, so that's where fourteen classrooms. Option B is dealing with four classrooms.
Mr. Wall, Trusty Petchukov has a question probably on that.
It says fourteen classrooms, but then it says eight classrooms up or four classrooms lower.
Yeah, so eight classrooms be at the top of the existing addition we just did, that's G Hall, and then four classrooms on the bottom and the main level just in front of.
What about the other two? That only adds up to twelve.
I'll bring Tim up here because I'm sure you can answer that better than I do.
Yeah, they're carved. Yeah, there is.
Thanks.
There is.
I'm sorry, ten on the top floor.
But good addition.
Yes.
Do you do this for a living?
Niwa, I'm good on my niwa.
Like my golf score, so. All right, option B is dealing with four classrooms on the inside courtyard and four classrooms again on the main floor around G Hall. Actually, that is actually seven classrooms because one classroom will have to be eliminated to give us better access into the courtyard area. Option C is dealing with classrooms on the main level and also relocating the existing media center, turning those into classrooms, and moving the media center to a different location at the high school. And option D is fourteen classrooms, that's looking at moving the media center again, making those classrooms, adding additional classrooms in the courtyard and on the main floor. All four options do include the expansion of the cafeteria, which is very crowded at this time. And in addition, you can see and highlighted is the actual estimated cost from the architects on what those classroom additions will be. So, we spent a lot of time at the Building and Site Committee going over that detail and the cost, again, going back to where we really need some direction from the board to figure out how to move forward with all the dynamic issues of possible redistricting and what the student projections look going forward.
So, as far as the boundary, boundaries, capacity, and enrollment process, so far, the board direction to date, we've eliminated school of choice, we've explored the DHS expansion, which Mr. Wall just reviewed, and then we also had Plant Moran and Middle Cities enrollment projection studies done. Before we can move forward, bless you. Before moving forward, DHS expansion will impact all the other options, so we need to figure that out first. We need direction as far as what we want to do with Dearborn High because that will impact everything else as far as the boundaries and the enrollment and the capacity for the high schools. The Plant Moran report, we received a draft, and then we gave them additional information so that we could have it broken down by high school feeder track, because currently we have overall numbers for Plant Moran, and I can tell you that Plant Moran shows a gradual increase from, and Plant Moran was very closely aligned with what Mr. Mashur had presented previously and what his findings were with the projections, is pretty closely aligned. What Plant Moran shows, hang on one second, is we're currently for the high schools only. Two thousand seventeen, six hundred, six thousand, six hundred and ninety students, projected for two thousand twenty-six, seven thousand, five hundred and seventeen students, and that's just for the high schools. And then for K-12, currently, we are at, K through twelve, currently, we are at twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-two, and projected growth for K-12 in two thousand twenty-one with a gradual increase is twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-six students. That's according to Plant Moran, and again, that's a draft, and it's a draft because we're still waiting for them to do it by high school. We want to know what each specific high school, what the projected numbers are, because this is as a district as all of high school right now currently. Middle Cities has three different methods they use, and those, the three different methods each come out with, one shows an increase, one shows a decrease, and one shows no change. So.
G-Pick.
Yeah. So, we could look into that study, we can, what our plan is to do is to have a consultant from Middle Cities and a consultant from Plant Moran either available at our next board meeting in August or in a study session, whatever you prefer. We'll have a consultant here from both, so we can ask more questions and dissect the information more in depth. So, that's what we've done so far, and that's what we need to know moving forward. Some things that were discussed previously that we would need board authorization before we could do anything else with it, but they have come up in our discussions here, is exploring the development of the ninth grade academy, exploring addition of another high school, and then recommend options. So, once we go through this process, and I'll go back to a timeline that I put together, recommending options that we are going to present to our stakeholders that may include the boundary line revisions, and whether this, these options are reached through our study session or at the next board meeting is up to you. So, once we agree on options that we want to move forward with, here's a timeline, and again, this is just a draft to kind of see where we're heading. Thank you. It is hard to read that. So, August two thousand seventeen, get board authorization to what steps we want to do moving forward next. August, or September, study session or August board meeting, which I've referenced a few times. Hopefully, by September two thousand seventeen, identify feasible options. And then October through December would be the piece where we go out to stakeholders and we have communication meetings at all the different schools, following the same format. It would not, we don't anticipate doing it in a committee. We anticipate going to all, several different buildings in different parts of the city and giving the information we have, sharing the options, accepting questions, accepting feedback, gathering as much information as possible and sharing as much information as possible, and then coming back all together in January or February, revisiting our options, revisiting the new information that we've received during this time, and then we'll look for more board direction in March.
Okay.
Questions, comments? Trusty Nessar.
I know there was, last time we talked about this, there was an issue of timing in January with the state requirements of the new building. Can you tell us about that?
So, on Dearborn High, there is going to be an issue of getting construction, so we would, there's new requirements that are going in in January. The latest rhetoric on that, they don't know if those requirements are going to stay or not, so obviously, we have to be cognizant of that issue. If we want to have something ready for next, beginning of next school year, we could talk about phasing. So, some of the options A, B, and C, and D, you could do part of the project now to deal with current issues, and some you can phase later, which obviously might have a longer cost because the more you do at one time, the more efficient it is. So, we can do a phasing project where if we want to get something done for next fall, i.e. maybe a four-room classroom addition and the cafeteria extension, we have to move quickly on that.
Okay, then the other question I had was, we had discussed before that there were a lot of. Dearborn High teachers that were on cart? How many are there?
And we had Mr. Martin, who came to the committee just before this meeting. He was part of that dialogue with the board committee.
We got all that information.
Twenty-one teachers.
Twenty-seven, I think, are on cart right now. Twenty-one? I thought twenty-seven.
And will that twenty-seven, they don't have access to their classrooms all day, I believe it was.
But, too many.
They tried to get it down to they only have to move once in the day.
Right, it was seventeen originally.
So, seventeen, right, yeah.
And so, he's been working to make sure that if a teacher moves, they only have to move once because they were moving multiple times last year, and it's a really big puzzle.
And then, you want to add the sixty-nine teachers? So, there's currently eighty-one teachers.
Eighty-one, yeah.
Sixty-nine on carts, to put it in another, what another way.
No. Sixty-nine don't have access to their classroom during their prop time.
Okay.
So.
Because there's another teacher.
Sixty-nine, sixty-nine classrooms are in use for the majority of the day.
For the six, full six hours.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's really packed.
And the only reason that they've been able to even be successful with that is because they, a lot of students are going for half a day at the Michael Berry Career Center or for dual enrollment or whatever, so they're not all in the building all day long, so that's how they've been able to manage it.
And as we expand the early college, it's helpful, but it doesn't solve the issue. But, you know, just as we're going to expand with the, you know, the community college, that's, you know, helpful, and it's a great program just for tuition being paid, but again, it doesn't solve the issue, but it is helpful right now both at Dearborn High and at Fortson.
And they're looking at student growth again.
Sue, enjoy the next couple of weeks because you're going to, we'll have a study session on this. We need a study session.
Is that what was kind of decided at the meeting? The meeting previous to this?
Well, not really, but I could pull them quickly just knowing how in the past study sessions.
The amount of information, yeah.
That'll be, that will take a lot of time. It'll take more than, I think, more than we could fit in a board meeting.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm reading you. I feel the same way.
After seeing the studies from Plant Moran and Middle Cities, which were kind of confusing and not real easy to follow with their information, and then all of the information we got tonight from Building and Site about the options for Dearborn High and how all these puzzle pieces need to go together in order to know what's the best plan and how we're going to finance everything, what pools of money, where are we going to, although Tom has convinced me, he's got it hidden away, I guess, a plan. So, that being said, there are so many moving parts that we really need to devote our focus to this one entire subject rather than to assume that we can do it in a half an hour discussion time period at a regular board meeting. I just don't think we can give it, do it justice.
And I recommended the, the finance should necessarily drive this discussion because this is about students and classrooms and instruction, and we can work with the finance committee to come up with a good idea, recommendation to the board of how this money should all come together.
Trusty Barry?
You know, you said that in the committee meeting, and there's a lot of value to that. I respect you for saying that because, yeah, we need to figure out what is in the best interest of all of our students, then try to figure out the finance. Chairman, I was going to say earlier, and Trusty Petchukov covered it, there's just too many things going on. If we choose A, B, C, and D. If we choose A, B, C, D, it's going to affect what we might do later on. Or if we do choose one of the other options, it might affect what happens at Dearborn High. So, the idea was, let's just get everybody in the same room. I'm still not convincing you, that's still, thank you.
No, he just doesn't.
I'm jealous, you've got a lot of vacations planned this summer. I think it's the right thing to do. I agree with everybody.
So, enjoy the next few weeks. We'll be back to studying the, in the study session for a while. Okay, good. Thank you very much for the presentation.
And would you like me to, with the consultants at that, put out a few dates in board briefs?
Yes, yep. Let's get some dates as soon as possible. This is a decision that can't wait very long. We've got a tight frame. Yes, please, Dr. Maliko. Okay. Next.
Okay, Board of Education Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence. I guess all we have is what's here.
We, I just opened, and it will be sent in board briefs, a, a letter from Bear Hallett, our attorneys. Does everyone have that? Okay.
Wait, no, I don't have that.
Yes, that will be in board briefs. It's on a complaint by Mr. Adol Mosad, that the process of selecting a board trustee was, he objected to the process. It was reviewed by Mr. Tim Courier. So, his response is there, so everyone will get, yeah, you'll get a copy of that. It'll be scanned, and it'll be in the next board brief. So, and then we have maybe something else from YABBA.
That's our annual event coming up, I believe, yeah. Then we had an invite from Judge Bazey.
For her investiture. For her investiture, September seventh. Next.
Okay, Board Member Committee and Organization Reports. We did have a building in sight. I think we heard everything that, because it was essentially, the whole time was consumed with Dearborn High options. So, what you heard was what we heard.
And the other agenda item was parking situation at Lori School.
At Lori, which we also.
We covered, I was covered too, thank you.
No other committee then, next?
Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
I'd like to say.
So, we were invited last week, the board members, to go to Miller Elementary's ASAP program that they have in the, during the summer. And I had a chance to go over there today and be in, to the classroom that invited us. There's about eleven kids there, ESL students or students that were prior ESL and are now kind of in the middle. They were learning about fractions. And I felt I had to step in and kind of help them. They had little pies that they were shading in, and they were having a hard time with a two-thirds, a pie that was split into thirds, and then a pie that was split into sixths, with having to do two-thirds on both. But I felt that there was a, kind of a language barrier in kind of describing how when you have a third, thirds and sixths, how to get two-thirds out of, out of both. And so, I was able to kind of step in and just, you know, explain to them, maybe in a different way. But, but I feel like the program would, would make use of having a parapro or somebody who could speak Arabic in the classroom to kind of help assist in that. Other than that, the, the entire program was fun. The kids were all such nice children. They were very excited that I was there. And I, I want to stop back in again, later this week and see them again.
Thank you for representing the board. I appreciate it, because it's always nice when a board member can attend events on behalf of all of us. We do kind of guard our, our little bit of personal time. So, we appreciate when somebody does represent all of us. So, thank you for attending. Well, Dr. Mead unfortunately had surgery, and that's why he's not with us today. He was actually scheduled to go to Mackin Island this week for an MCCA conference. And I was his backup. So, I will be, I will be going there. I encourage you all to look at the agenda items that are there. If you have any questions or something that you want discussed or some answers. I'll be at the conference this week and hopefully come back with some helpful information.
Maybe some positive information would be good.
Some positive information, hopeful. Enjoy the island, too.
Trustee Barry?
Yes. You know, for almost three decades, I've been serving this community. And what I've been through the last, I would say, few weeks by one particular individual, I feel like I need to say something here. He has a paper, which I will not name. He does not live in Dearborn, and, but he's taken the liberty, just bashing me at every chance he gets. Also, actually invited me to respond to some of his allegations in his paper, but I have no respect for his papers, so I wouldn't do that. But I don't need to prove myself to anybody in this city or in this district. What I've been doing all these years, this is about power, power greed, and respect or lack of respect. During my campaign last year, I did what every other candidate does. You go out and seek endorsements. You go out there and try to raise some money, so you can try to get your platform out. During one of the endorsements I was seeking, I sat down one-on-one with this individual. He is not a school district employee. He's obviously not a student, so I have no problem mentioning his name, because he's taken my name through his paper and said some nasty things to me, things that I had about me, things that my dad had to read. It took me a lot to, you know, to calm my dad down and say, this is part of being in the political arena, which is not really, not at this level. You know, we talk about a school board seat. What is a school board seat? You do it from your heart. You do it because you want to serve the district, you want to serve the students. When you start thinking about different political positions, president at the national level, senators, House of Representatives, you go to the state level, you're talking about the governor and legislators. Let's come down to the local level, local level. You have your mayor, you have your council people that take care of our city. School boards, even below that, when it comes on to the totem pole. With all due respect to priests and delegates, and I do have a lot of respect for what they do, year in, year out, we're just a tad above priests and delegates. So, yes, we do it out of our heart, we do it because we have children in the district or grandchildren, or it's just something that we enjoy doing. During this campaign, Mr. Osama Sablani pretty much asked me point, point blank, said, you're going to work with us. I said, whoa, 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 whoa. What are you talking about, work with us? He says, you know exactly what I'm talking about. At that point, I said, when there's an us, there's always a them and a conversation. This is very unethical. I only make decisions when the issue is on the table. There was another gentleman, also doesn't live in the district. Needless to say, that entity decided not to endorse my campaign. There was another entity that decided not to endorse my campaign, but send me a check for a thousand dollars. It's a lot of money for a school board race. But with a little side note in his letter, saying that we will not be endorsing you, but you and I need to sit down and talk. I took it as, sit down and talk to straighten me out. What I did with that check is I made a copy of it, voided it, and mailed it back to that, to that entity. That's all I'd say. Later on in my campaign, and that's the only name on there mentioned, just for the record, was Osama Sablani. Later on in my campaign at the University of Michigan, Dearborn, we had a forum there. And I heard from his mouth to my ear, former leader that's close to that, Mr. Sablani, say things like, I slash we control the board. I just laughed. I got a lot of respect for my colleagues that sit at this table. Nobody controls anybody, nobody controls this board. It just, I just said, eh, never mind, this guy's just big-headed, and that's all he knows. I left that one alone. Later on, in December, I belong to this breakfast group. It's like a network, a business network group. We were invited to luncheon at Lepita. And during that luncheon, Mr. Sablani stood up in front of sixty people. I know sometimes we have, like, you know, short-term memory, or sometimes we forget, we want to forget. But he stood up in front of almost sixty people at that luncheon, and his exact words is, I or we, something to that extent, control the school board. And he was looking forward to controlling the council next year, referring to this election coming up. That is so wrong. You don't even live in Dearborn. That is so wrong. During the board retreat, our consultant sat right there. And for the first couple hours, he was educating trustee Thorpe and myself, the new board members, how we should conduct ourselves. And I, I listened, I paid attention. The message I got out of him was, as a board member, when there's a five-two or a six-one split on an issue, you should pretty much roll over and play dead. That, that bothered me, because I've been serving on boards, like, literally, over twenty-five years. I've never heard anybody say that. We all have strong feelings about an issue. And you never roll over, you always want to advocate on your opinion on that issue. I asked Dr. Maliko to find me books or literature written by a consultant. I won't mention his name. And he was unable to, but he shared some books with me. I did my research. Nowhere, nowhere does it say, that I was able to find, that when you're one of seven, that don't feel the same way as the rest of the board, that you shouldn't advocate on your beliefs. Matter of fact, it was the exact opposite that I found. There's a lot of important issues coming up. For somebody to say that they control the board, and again, and I say it again, and I really, really mean this, I have nothing but the utmost respect for my colleagues. I know what we go through. I know we got a little emotional for the past six, seven weeks, but I know what each one of us go through. So, I don't really believe anybody controls anybody. There was one problem I had, and I spoke of it before. One of my colleagues gave me a call to bring me up to snuff on a meeting that's supposed to take place three or four days from now. That really bothered me, that there's a meeting going outside the meeting or phone calls going on and this, and this, and that. And he, he took the initiative to call me to bring me up to date on an issue that we're supposed to decide three days from now, come in here and talk about it. Well, then, appointment process started. Again, I want to make it very clear, it was never about individuals for me. Matter of fact, I really, really do feel bad for the individuals that got caught up in this mess. It was always about the process I did not agree with. The easy thing to do was to roll over and plead dead, Mr. Sablani, but no, that's not who I am. That's not what I've done all these years for the city that I love or the district that I love to get to this point. I do owe an explanation to Dearborn, Dearborn taxpayers, Dearborn students and their parents. The lawsuit I filed was truly, truly filed with the intention that I believe that the right thing will come out of this. There's no doubt in my mind. I was kind of concerned how people were going to feel on the district and on the city that I live in. But I can reassure, I was reassured by people I ran into at Kroger, by John, by Mary, people telling me, hey, we trust you. If you think this is the right thing, then let us know what we need to do. That meant the world to me. So, I thank the people that cheered their love for me the last few weeks. Again, it was never about a board seat. It was about people in control. And people might ask, control of what? Control of what? Let's see. There's, I missed a couple zeros. There's a lot of zeros in this number. Over three hundred million dollars in budgets between Dearborn Public School District and AHFC. It's about jobs. It's about contracts. It's gotten to the point where it's out in the community that if you're looking for a promotion or a job in this district, you should see or go visit certain individuals. That is sad. I got nothing but the greatest respect for educators, what they have to get through or go through. Today, we hired some, some awesome people, assistant principals. I was very happy to see that. I believe all of them came in from within the district. I'm very, very proud of that, to see, I mean, teachers become assistant principals. And this, I felt the excitement of most of them up there, all of them up there, I felt the excitement of. I sat down with Mr. Sablani recently, trying to iron on some things, tell him how I feel about things. And I asked him, I said, you don't live in Dearborn, but you took two and a half or three hours of your time to come sit at a school board meeting? Two meetings, three meetings? Why? Why? Why is that? And what I've learned about greedy people, power-hungry people the past few weeks is they love to brag about it. They love to brag that, yes, I'm in control, even though they might not be. They love to brag about it, any chance they're given. I asked him point-blank, I, I kind of value what you do at the global level, national level, your politics. You're very important to this community. Why would you, why would you commit all this time to the school board? You keep doing what you're doing at that level. I quote him. He said, all my power comes from the school board, what I was, what I, I or we were able to do. I feel sorry for him, honest to God, I feel sorry for him. But, didn't want to turn this meeting into a negative and end up on a negative note. But for what he has done to me and my family and some close friends of mine the past few weeks, very, very shameful, very, very shameful. I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you for the time.
Okay. That was board member commentary. Does anyone have any?
Superintendent.
Superintendent Maliko.
I just had one that I'd like to mention. You know, I'm big, I don't know, some of you might know Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, and I'm a big fan, I've always been. And some of that also talks about, you know, taking care of yourself. And so, trustee Petlicoff and I went to the, you know, the Healthy Dearborn has been so active. And on the nineteenth, we went to the walk and roll in the park, and we walked with community members that were biking. And so, they, they asked me to come, Sarah Gleischer, she's doing a lot of work as kind of the guest lead walker. And so, trustee Petlicoff ended up joining, Mr. Wall was there, and there were some union members and some teachers. And it was actually really neat, because as we were walking through the community, we saw people sitting on the doorsteps, you know, trying, it was kind of warmer that day, and there was a chance of rain. And so, we got to meet with people just as we walked by, and it was kind of really neat. And we got to, it was about an hour walk in total. And so, I, I'll definitely do that again, and just kind of in the spirit of really, you know, taking care of ourselves, as I know you're all busy, too. Just remember in that little extra walk or that run, I like to run to clear my thoughts in the morning. Not a long time, but it just helps, and so, I was excited to be part of that. And so, I'm glad, you know, very positive what Healthy Dearborn's doing across the city.
And it occurs every Wednesday at a different park in the city.
And trustee Thorpe looks like he'd like to get out and get his, he was mentioning he'd like to get a little exercise. Yes, it is.
It will be colder. Winter is coming, as they say.
We need to maximize summer, so, okay. Trustee Petlicoff, on to the next.
Okay, request for information and our future agenda items.
I'd just like to note that we do have a copy of the Open Meetings Guide, which we can all read at our leisure and memorize. Thank you, Dr. Maliko, for that, so that we have it readily available. We should probably all bookmark it on our tablets also. And then on September, the college September eighteenth meeting, I will be at a wedding out of town, so I won't be available. I've asked Dr. Mead to run the college meeting on that date, so just an FYI for everybody.
And we'll get some possible dates for the study session and determine that and then put that date out?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further for the well and good?
I just want to say something.
Yes.
Permission, I, I saw Dr. Maliko's comments and trustee Almud and trustee Petlicoff. And I did have a nice conversation with trustee Petlicoff. Moving forward, the, the way I would handle requests for information is I would ask direct questions of Mr. Maliko, Dr. Maliko. If he's able to answer them or his cabinet can answer them, that's fine. If not, then, then we'll, the way I, the way I did things the first time around with, I wasn't calling him Dr. Winston, but Mr. Winston, was a little different. wasn't going to call him Dr. Weston, but Mr. Weston, was a little different.
Okay.
I used to ask for information.
Oh, okay.
Get the information, go through it, have a discussion with him, discussion with my colleagues, and we go from there. So, but moving forward, and I thank trustee Petrokoff for her advices, I will ask direct questions. The only reason I hesitate sometimes because it might come out of something negative.
Oh, okay.
But from now on, I'll just ask direct questions and we'll take them from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we did have, my team had a meeting, as you may have seen, to try to really streamline the process so that we can really work as a team gathering that data and making sure we're serving the boards.
I can guarantee you, there is, for every question that I ask or request for information, I mean, when I first got on this board in 2010, I went through like six or eight sessions with the school board.
Okay.
And it was pretty much common sense to me, data-driven decision-making.
Sure.
Data-driven decision-making, and you need the data, we need the data. When we start having the discussions about graduation rates and broken down by feeder schools, look where we're at now, data-driven decision-making. And, but I understand that, you know, your cabinet and yourself want to handle this a little differently, and I will respect that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, trustee Elaine, I have to say that one thing I do respect about these board meetings, whether it's board commentaries or citizen commentaries, is a lot of times, whatever I go through on social media, and this has been, from what trustee Barry had mentioned, it's been a tough process. And as he assured, nobody on this board is controlled by anyone, and it's pretty insulting that there's an insinuation that we are. I would hope, moving forward, I don't know what the policy is for board members, but if I were to have a personal dispute with someone, just like when people come up here, we ask them not to address people by name, obviously because that other person is not there. And respect for all of our individuals. No matter what people have done for the school board, if they're involved in the process, no matter where they're from, if they care about this district, we encourage everybody to come to these school board meetings. But I, my personal opinion is, I truly don't appreciate, you know, if somebody is not here to call people out or talk about hearsay, certain conversations. I couldn't, I couldn't leave this meeting without saying this, is that I do have respect for everyone here, I truly do, and respect for people that are not here and maybe can't defend themselves in such blatant accusations and miscar, and what could be construed as mischaracterizations. Again, I do respect the process. I do think that there's a reason why we ask our citizens not to mention names when they're addressing someone or when they're talking about an issue, and I do think that our board members should follow that as well.
Trustee Barry?
I'm just assuming trustee Hamud's had, you know, something to do with my comments. I mean, the policy is very clear. I know it's common courtesy and it's policy, but the policy is very clear that you don't bring up employee names or student names. But what my name has been through for the last few weeks, and I've had the patience to just, just let it go, let it go, when it started affecting some family members, these are not accusations. I mean, when somebody tells me something, it doesn't get any better than that, that's not an accusation somebody puts, I mean, that's, I'm just repeating what was said to me, period, so, okay, we'll leave it at that.
As you said, trustee Barry, people say a lot of things, and we just have to let a lot of those roll, so.
Sure.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to future meeting dates?
Yeah, and I'm going to add one on here because of the requirement. Tomorrow, we are having a city relations committee meeting-
Thank you.
-at the Dearborn offices-
Thank you.
Administrative center.
Administrative center, the DAC.
Yeah.
From three to five P.M. It's a regular committee meeting between city officials and their staffs.
Good. Thank you for keeping us on track.
And Monday, August fourteenth, 2017, HFC Policy Committee Meeting, six P.M. at the Andrew Mazzara Services and Conference Center in the President's Conference Room, Henry Ford College. Monday, August fourteenth, 2017, eight, I can't even talk, my mouth's dry. HFC Meeting, seven P.M. at the Andrew Mazzara Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom, Henry Ford College. And Monday, August twenty-first, 2017, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, seven P.M. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Fancher Boardroom.
We're adjourned.